Well, there's something.
We're in voting order. If everyone will stand and remain in the line.
Consent agenda is to allow and maintain the safety of the area to the area of the public. The wish stands. War nation under God, indivisible, but lettered in justice for all.
Don't pass their agenda on Friday. Are there any changes?
I want to move something from the consent agenda. The appointments, we can move that to item B, a regular agenda.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the change?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes mentioned.
And I will second.
All those are favorable?
Aye.
Are there any announcements this evening?
None for me.
Um, I'll do this for Nicole. There'd be a drop-in input session for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan next Friday. Well, I apologize. I don't know the time. You don't know the time?
No.
It is 10:00 AM.
It's 10:00 AM. It's too late. Thank you, Nicole.
Okay. Public comment this evening. We have one in person and we have several that were emailed. Who's reading? Daniel Larson.
I will read for you. The first one I have is from Kim LaRoe. Dear Town Council, would you please address the use of truckers using Jig Brakes in the town of Mills River? Exhaust brakes that are standard equipment on commercial trucks are necessary and produce an acceptable noise. The noisy brakes you hear are aftermarket accessories that truckers will purchase to enhance the noise the exhaust brakes make. There are many cities and communities nationwide that have ordinance preventing the use of JV and would like Mills River to do the same. Regards, Kim LaRoe. The next one is from Jeannie West. Good morning. I read in Hendersonville newspaper about the noise tolerance issue. I live in Haywood Knowles and have thoroughly enjoyed going to the various venues in the area that offer outside music. It's a great way to spend a warm spring, summer, and evening as well as supporting local businesses. It would be a shame to limit this. These venues also support many community activities, i.e. blood drives, humane society. I hope you take this into consideration when you begin the debate process. Feel free to contact me. Thank you, Jeannie West. Dear Town of Mills River, I am Lucy Skrzynski. I'm writing to you because I would like to put an ice skating rink in Mills River. I love to ice skate, and I'm sure a lot of other people like to, too. But the closest ice skating rink is in Greenville. And if you live here, it is a long drive to go to South Carolina to ice skate and then come all the way back. I think it would be a great experience for everyone. For safety reasons, masks will be required. And there will be a safety guard skating around the ring at all times to make sure people are being safe. There will be plenty of ice skates for everyone. I would like the rink to be indoors with lots of room to move around. People may rent the rink, but there must be more time for others to skate for fun. This could make extra money for our town. Games can be hosted there such as figure skating and hockey. Since COVID, I think a fair number of people in the building, that time would be 75. Thank you for your time. Please keep me posted. Sincerely, Lucy Skrzynski. And the last one I have. Dear council members, on February 5th, a freezing, winding, freezing, winding night, I heard loud music inside my house. It was coming from the venue at Mills River. I was under the impression that the venue of Mills River permit had been revoked. Can you tell me how and why is the business allowed to continue? Please address tonight. On the planning board's discussion for a noise ordinance, my understanding is some council members only want to address the acoustic acoustial sounds coming from our local bars. I asked tonight, did you please include addressing noise ordinance for new construction, such as starting and stopping times? On our town's upcoming food park, as you can imagine, I'm genuinely concerned that this will continue to look as it does now and has for one year. I ask the town council, have the developer slash landowner, please submit a business plan and a layout of what the food park will look like. Sincerely, Wayneette Wilson.
Interesting. So to our in-person public comment, we have Barry. Just touch your microphone and introduce yourself for the minute.
My name is Barry. We own the property down there here, where the food trailers are. This was referred out of the mud pit the other night, claiming maybe that our construction has to take place, so it's gonna be a month before it gets done. We've been in a trailer over a year ago on the phone from an approval letter from Rob Murgis, time planer. And he said we can do mobile offices or food trailers. So we got Henderson County permitted us a power pole for statues. So we hooked it up and put in another one over a month ago, hooked it up. And then we were told by Alan Steinbeck Monday, he texted Mike, the guy who's going to open us a second food trailer, that we had to have a zoning permit. So I came by to get a zoning permit, and they wouldn't let me have one, even though it's not zoning for that. And as far as the shed to build there that we want, you know, for picnic table or whatever used underneath it, none is required by Henderson County, less than 12 foot by 12 foot. I've got a letter from the Henderson County zoning for that in the inspection department. And we were just trying to, according to the survey, it was done a couple of years ago, bring in more food options for Mills River. Since COVID has, nobody can go into a restaurant. I'm talking about online, you can build a restaurant, and they wouldn't, people would never pay the rent to go into one anyway. Because if they don't have one of your 30, even 50% off, it's just a dead horse. And so the first option we thought would be food trailer. Mike is here. He would like to start out in a food trailer, till he gets his business up and going. And then go into a brick and mortar building, maybe a year from now, maybe two years from now. But the road hasn't been lined. It's on first construction at this time, 2023, which has already been postponed one time. It could get postponed again. We don't know. But there's really nobody wants to come there on this property till they know exactly when the road's gonna start, when it's gonna be done. And even then, when it starts, that's two years of construction. They don't want to travel there. So we're just kinda in a catch-22 at this point, but we would like to produce some income. They would like to start their businesses. So we've had two sides of ATCP that are there that has inquired about. I really don't want a permanent food park, so to speak. Because we want to do, you know, bigger retail, shit play or whatever comes along. We've had some national brands talk to us. But although it'll go away, the temporary food trailers will go away as soon as the road gets done, COVID gets over with, and these people can afford to get into a brick and mortar building. So, and it was requested that we might need to put permanent bathrooms in. That's a big expense just for a food trailer. And at that point, you have two to three thousand migrant workers coming here in the summer. Would you make, would you actually require permanent bathrooms that ever come in, you know, for them to use? And then if I build these bathrooms on the four lane, then anybody coming up and down the road to stop? Now I'm a restaurateur, but I have to pay for them. So we thought the best option would be for the justice that we already got, because apparently got a dumpster in place. And, I mean, people are just coming, getting their food, leaving most of their order ahead, Facebook or whatever, and coming and getting it. So we don't, it would be nice to have a few tables out there, a few sheds for people if they want to sit around, but it's not really our goal. But I guess my question, yeah, do you want to do trailers or not? Do some difference?
Dale, is that, let me ask you a question. Is that, this is on our agenda, what, the first or second?
First meeting in March.
First meeting in March. What do you think, I'm asking you or Daniel, is to buy all of these food truck people, you know, like you guys, the property owners, like yourself, is to come back to council meetings and say, this is what we can live with, this is what we can't live with? Is that, Daniel, is that?
We can certainly reach out to the proprietors that have had food trucks and then invite them and ask that they invite the folks who are serving them to come.
Well, is that, I'm not picking on Dale, but I'm very well aware I can pick on him. Is that Dale is in a unique situation that, I'm gonna use Wayne. Wayne is in a different situation. And then you've got the Mills River Brewery that's in an entirely different situation. So I want to make sure that we do the right thing, we support these guys. So would that be all right?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we got an ample parking. We could have more. We're going landscape around it. But I can't develop the whole 20 acres for three, six years and not knowing what's going to go in side and back horses yet. I mean, we got a lot of, you know, plans in the pipe that nothing is for sure yet. And we're not even close to submitting a permanent plan for the whole site till, you know, we can get through step one and two. And one of them will be in the road by me. I've lived in Mills River my whole life, and they were going wide in 2018, when I was in Osconville, and that's been a couple of years ago.
What's the current projection on the road?
2023.
I was gonna say that for, for Council meetings, but they have delayed a year.
Right.
Oh, sorry. Ran out of the microphone. The project itself has been delayed an additional year, so that's going to be completed in 2024. One ninety one, why, that's what I'm speaking of. Rightaway, on the other hand, is the current now, will be proceeding as expected. So I would expect that we'll know very soon what properties and what portions and what parcels they're gonna want to take for that roadway. And then we'll be moving into the design phase, but construction actually hasn't been pushed back by a full 12 months.
They told us if they were trying to do acquisitions after July 1st.
That's my understanding as well. Yeah, get into the new question here.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel to the consent agenda, I made the one move moving B to the regular agenda. Is there a motion that we adopt rest of the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll first second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Regular agenda. Regular agenda A is capital projects financing versus capital reserve fund. This is more of an informational items, having actions during the night.
That's right.
Learning question.
So this is a follow-up to the discussion we had, the visiting, visiting session in January about financing. At the time, the project demand was either a new town hall or renovation of this town hall in a manner that would support the needs of the community for a longer period of time. The question was raised, I will debate for that. Would it be something that we would set up a capital reserve for? Would it be something that we could issue bonds for? So the direction the staff received was to research this and provide more information about that, what those options are. So again, this is for informational purposes. I'm gonna hand it over to Town Board Fire Instructor to run through the highlights of it for you. So Sue, with that, it's all yours.
Okay. The first question was whether or not we could set up a capital reserve fund and save towards a new, a new or renovated town hall. And my response at the time was that we could only do it for reasons that bonds could be issued. And I could not remember all the reasons, but what I discovered is that since it's allowable for both council rooms and office buildings, I would assume the town hall would fit in there. So it is an option to create a capital reserve fund, and if that is something council wants to do, that would be part of a budget discussion. The second question regarding the feasibility of issuing bonds. Yes, we could do it, but just for your information, there's a lot more involved. It has to be approved by a local government commission, and before we can even get their approval, we have to have it shovel ready. We have to have all our plans and be ready to bid. We don't have to actually issue bids, but we need to, we need to know what we're doing and have all of our major permits, phase one environmental, all of that in hand before we can find out if we can administer a bond. And we're gonna have to hire a bond attorney. We need a credit rating agency. We'll have to get bond or insurance. I made a whole list, and now I can't find it. Anyway, there's a lot more involved, and there's a lot more expense involved. So I would assume that would mean if we wanted to do this, we would want it for a larger amount of money. If it wasn't going to be a huge amount for whatever we did for the town hall, say we were just renovating, you might want to try to consider bundling another project, a more expensive project. But anyway, it's not an either-or proposition. It's, you could do both. And you don't have to take any action tonight. It's just for your information.
Sue, I was the one who asked you to do all that research, and I apologize for making you run through all those issues. But I do appreciate the work that you put together here, and it's really good information for us to have, I think, just going forward. And also, I can sort of read between the lines here and see that there are some potential recommendations that would make sense for the town to pursue. And so I like, I like the way you presented the information here, and I appreciate you doing all that for us.
You're welcome.
Just, just a matter of history. We actually looked into this 10 years ago, I guess. Is that fair or soon?
This building has been here since, we have been in this building since 2011, so that would be fair, at least 10 years.
So, so roughly 10 years ago, is that, from what I understand, the closest bond attorney is in New York. And the quote that I got 10 years ago was $60,000 to $70,000 just to get a bond rate. Now, at some point in time, I don't think it's now, but at some point in time, is that we need to seriously consider this. So just a little bit of history.
And I did not get that specific in my research. After 10 years, I would hope there might be someone closer. And enough towns do this. I can't believe that it, that it is still that expensive, but I don't know.
I think for my purposes, it's useful to know that it's not an either-or situation. So we could enter into this and, you know, create a reserve fund and then maybe transition that into, make sure the bond, we decided to figure this something that we're planning. But having options is very good for us. And the policy standpoint is, it's very good to know that those options are.
Sorry. If you furthering the extra words, Steve.
You're welcome. One more comment. Before you went to issue, considering issuing a bond, you might consider having a debt policy. We do not have a debt policy as to types of debt and what we would do with it, how we would repay it. Because I, when I was doing this research, I came across that as a suggestion. I'm pretty much assuming it's probably a requirement somewhere. So before we go there, I don't know that we need to be there today, but I think we need to consider that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Steve on that? So the, on the agenda is the capital projects request discussion.
So again, going back to your visioning session in January, there was a, I don't need to review capital projects. And we talked about a few in the direction we got, we'll come back tonight with some recommendations on those. Just by way of reminder, last year, when that budget was adopted, included with it was the capital improvement plan, which for the current fiscal year we're in is about $760,000. Of that, what we've spent is on solar panels, baseball field, obviously, and the stairs, so where the name is still in. We've recommended, and I continue a recommendation this evening, to hold on any sort of branding work. That's just another effort that we don't quite have the capacity for with the town plan, the law, the act plan, and soon to be pedestrian bicycle plan. So what we are requesting and recommending for funding, first one, we point out that regardless of what is funded this evening, including the two items I provided you earlier in the week, no money, it will be drawn from fund balances. It will just simply be reallocated money. That's already within the budget and accounted for. Instead of spending it on something like the banner farm road property, it would be spent on something like the storage bins here at the park. So the money's already there. It just needs to be reallocated. So I'll just start from the top. Pardon my striving. Very basic, very low cost. This is just something that needs to be done for safety purposes. It also is a little bit aesthetic. Here, crosswalks, bright, fresh paint looks a little bit better than the orange paint. So we're requesting funding for that in $4,000. Large format printer wasn't a capital improvement plan, isn't a capital group plan, recommended for funding next year, but it came up as an item at the visioning sessions. We've done a little bit of research on that, $12,000. Should secure is something that will serve the community for a long, long time to come. And nowadays, you're getting more than just a printer with these. You're getting the ability to copy and scan large format plans, which is very helpful on two projects in particular, and one of them is planner to do with doing things virtual as we are now. It's really helpful to be able to have plans in the office, write on them, scan those, and send them back to the designer rather than trying to look at a Zoom call, point at things. That's just a much more efficient way to do things. In addition to that, you can scan, excuse me, yes, you can scan projects, scan projects for archival purposes. We have hundreds of sheets of plans that are good to hang on to. Some of them will be a little bit getting there, but the other ones, I'm gonna keep. If we have a digital copy of it, that satisfies our requirements as far as the statutes are concerned, but a record to catch it. And it's searchable at that point. You can search for words, project titles, project numbers, permit numbers, whatever the case may be. So it's not just a printer. They're a little bit more advanced nowadays. So there's $12,000 in there. Excuse me. The permit software, the permit software we've been talking a little bit about the last couple of months. At the visioning session, we were talking specifically about the possibility of partnering with Henderson County on that project. And they are moving forward with a company that we believe will be the same company that we're working with. They haven't signed a contract yet, so I don't want to put them on the spot and say that they've absolutely committed to it because there's still negotiations. We could partner with them to do that. It would save us a little bit of money on implementation component of it, about $6,000, but it wouldn't change our annual subscription fee, which is just over $12,000 because we would still need to pay for the subscription for the town to use the software for its own purposes. So it's, yes, it's a one-time savings if we're looking at implementation costs, but it's negligible. And it's just for the first year, and after that, we would still pay the recurring fees. There are ways to have a town zone system, which again, I say I'm recommending that throughout the go because there is just, it's simply more efficient and allows us more control over it. The storage bins are something that we had included in the plan for the current year, and that would be something that we put over the maintenance facility and have a place to store bulk material. Right now, that is stored on the parking lot mostly, and it's just, one thing, in the summertime, when the park is very busy, it takes up valuable parking. Other thing, if it is stored out there, it's not the most timely of things to see when it comes to the park. The park is very well maintained. It's clean. So we want to try to get that bulk storage somewhere else where it's not clear and present to everyone who comes to the facility. The shelter bin package, that is in response to, again, the visioning session, we were talking about capital investments for the park. This has been on the park plan since the park plan was adopted or created several years ago for the park that you see today. This is a smaller version of what we have out by the dog park, which we think will be advantageous for families who need a little bit smaller spot. As we talked about, you don't need an entire shelter, large shelter for a six or seven-year-old's birthday party. So this would give us another option for shelter space, closer restrooms to the back of the park, otherwise high access point, and just another place for people to congregate. And so that's finished, that's basically putting the engineering work together for the site work and the bid package, so we can go to bid with it. The funding for construction, what happened most likely in the upcoming year's budget. And then the Ford F-250, that's a full-size pickup truck that we've talked about a couple of times. That would not replace, but add to fleet and the Parks Department to allow them to basically do their jobs more efficiently and safely. A little bit more hauling capacity, towing capacity, when the time comes, pull something back and forth between here and Banner Farm Road. And it's four-wheel drive, because we certainly don't have right now. And then the two other items that I sent out this week, and I'm sorry to do this on somewhat short notice, I don't like to do that, is a little bit time sensitive. We talked about the guardrail on, Monday a week ago for Butler Bridge Road and the curve there near, down the hill from Glen Marrow. That is the municipal grid that I passed out. That is the municipal agreement that I passed out. Also that is $28,000. And you'll probably notice in there that there is a clause about the municipality paying for utility relocations and things like that. That standard language included is in all municipal agreements. I spoke with the DOT, it's unlikely that we would have to do anything. They just have to put that language in there because it's standard for the municipal agreements. There are actually going to have existing power poles down there and these utilities should be buried deep enough that it won't be an issue for the posts going in for the guard rail. Again, that's $28,000. And then the last item is the level two charging rebate agreement, which I passed out this evening and emailed to you earlier today. That is for the electric vehicle charging stations that we applied for that in January. We've got that, we were awarded the rebate for that, $20,000. We need to issue the letter of acceptance in the next couple of weeks. We don't have to start construction in the next couple of weeks, we just need to get this project signed. This money, excuse me, this project could also be funded through existing funds in the budget. We wouldn't take any additional action other than authorizing expenditures this evening because there's, there's funding available from the solar panels within the existing budget that could be used towards the charging stations themselves. And that is it. There's a lot of information. Again, funding is available. The one item that we would need to come back to you on is you can authorize the mayor to sign the DOT agreement this evening. We would need to do a budget amendment to move funding from one department to another. Again, not changing the bottom line, just set for the required to get approval to do, do that particular operation in the budget. So if you wanted to move forward with it, you can get this signed with the DOT note. And then at your next meeting, we could present that budget amendment to you. And if you're in agreement with it, get that done and get the state to town match. I'm happy to ask any questions. Don't want to go into detail on anything else.
We talked about the PAL bill. Funding from the PAL bill could help paper garden. Can it reimburse us?
So, do you know for sure there would be any utilities to be moved for?
No, but I've been told that utilities are found in the field, the engineers will work with the utility operators to build, to work around that.
So worst-case scenario, if they start a project and find something that does have to be moved and is largely made to fund this, which definitely would be on the hook. Can we take the, can we take the easy one first, the guard rail?
Sure.
Is that, this is a safety thing. Is that this has been going on for 40 days and for 40 nights. And even when I was in the fire department many moons ago, is that we still have people run off the road. So is that, I think this is a reasonable offer. Now, I will support this, but I really, really don't want to get into funding DOT projects because it's, you know, it's $30,000 today, tomorrow it may be 35. But is that, I'm okay with this guard rail project.
I should mention, just for the record, we did get a letter from Keith Leinster, fire department supporting this request. To your point, Roger, it's a safety issue that we want to help address.
And we've asked the DOT several years in a row about it, but it's probably never going to move up on the list again until somebody dies. And we don't really want to get stuck on it.
Yeah, the deal was, the reason they don't want to invest any money in fixing that problem is because that road is scheduled to improve. So they're going to be foremaning and putting in a sound media and redoing that bridge completely. But in the meantime, projects keep getting pushed back, so.
It will be regular.
Exactly. So I'm looking forward to hearing it. I am very much in favor of this project. We invest $20,000, we're going to save, you know, how many lives every first time. It's important and I think it's a, it's a good use of tax credit dollars.
I think another answer to the question, if they didn't finish with the guard rail project and the next day someone comes through and takes it out, that's the DOT's responsibility.
It's a warranty.
So it's not for us, we can fix it again and again.
Right.
It's the DOT's property.
It'd be an infrastructure right away.
Well, everybody's done a good job talking about it. I don't know if there's anything else I have to say, other than I'm disappointed as well.
So do you want us to take, address these one at a time, the one at a time?
But that's, that's up, that's up to the board to do it that way.
If you would at least address the guard rail separately because there's an agreement involved and the same with the vehicle charging station.
Specifically, we would, you would need to authorize Mayor Harris to sign the agreement and direct us to come back with a budget at your next meeting.
So I make a motion that we, Sunday, or today, signs the agreement to fund the guard rail of the bridge road.
I'll second the motion.
All those are favorites? All right, we're down.
Do you want to move on to the, the contractor grant, excuse me, the charging agreement, just because?
That is just on the list.
So just as a reminder, the, the project cost for this is approximately $56,000. If I have to point it out, $56,300, maybe I believe. There's $77,000 remaining in the budget for the solar panels, so it would cover this. With the $20,000 rebate that we've secured, our total investment would be approximately $36,000. This also was included in the capital improvement plan. It was planned for next year, but again, this opportunity presented itself. So that we estimated it to be $35,000 if I do it again next year. So if you can, if everyone's on board with this one, it's actually addressed to me because I applied for the grant. So you can authorize me to sign it. And then work could begin really as soon as the equipment is available, which is estimated between 30 and 60 days from now. Installation time will be, again, depending upon weather, reinforce that. As you're working with electricity and grid and earth, weather dependent, probably a month or so, once they, once they get the money.
Very quickly, that's good. Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is a project that's been on my, very high on my list for a while. I think it's something that, very much like the solar panels that we all see when you drive into the park now. Everybody sees them as well, how it's on the, the white flag we have extended to the park. It positions Mills River as a forward thinking community. I also think it attracts visitors to the park, which is always good, you know, to come here specifically to charge your cars. You've been using the park while you're in here. It is also a amenity for residents who are out driving around, want to pop in and top off their charger on the car, hang out, come in and pay their tax bill, what have you. And as we're moving forward with the comprehensive land use plan and bike type facilities and all of these different things, I just think it's going to enhance a potential for tourism that can be brought, brought to the area. And folks might want to pop in here, charge their car, walk on the freeway over to Mills River and have a burger and a sandwich and then come back and enjoy some time in the park and then head on the way. But the fact that we'll have these charging stations here in the park, it's going to be advertised and all of these electric vehicle enthusiasts are going to put Mills River on the map literally as a place where they can stop in and utilize our facilities. And the fact is, it's not going to cost us much, but anything at all other than the initial investment because the solar panels are mainly shared and powered in sense. So it's not as though people are going to come in, plug in their cars and we're going to get a walker and electric bill. It's not, not that way at all. In fact, our solar power will generate all the power that's needed for these charging stations. So I'm obviously in favor of this and I would encourage council to consider this design in a positive way.
I think I agree with Council of Kaski. And I think one thing that is important to remember too is that electric cars are a small percentage of the population now. But with federal regulations, that's going to increase. So it's something that we're going to have to address sooner or later, and this is a great opportunity to get started in that.
One other thing I left out, you know, one of the things that I really like about this program, it's a Volkswagen program because they like the consumers. So we're benefiting based on the fact that they're being punished for lying to consumers. So we're getting $20,000 in tax or in reimbursement that saves us tax money that otherwise we might spend on these things. And it's all been done, punished a company for lying to a consumer in the first place. So I think that's, that's a part of it. There's a little bit of retribution and vengeance in there for me against Volkswagen. But, you know, I say, you know, keep your German cars and we'll take your money. Thank you very much.
I'm okay with the, with the charging stations, but two can be odds. Is that, and maybe Daniel, this is aimed at you, is that I'd like at some point in time, is that from doing a little research on this, is that there may be an option to add solar panels. Well, is that, let's look into that. If it costs us an extra $100, I'm okay with that. The other thing is that this is a benefit to the citizens of Mills River and probably all of Henderson County and maybe even Isla. So I'd like this to be free. And so is that if we can put something in the maintenance building to where we look at it, maybe a year from now, you know, after they're up and going. And so you come back and say, you know, guys, this is costless, then we can look at it again.
Sure.
Okay.
That's, that's a good point, Roger. And so my next question for Daniel would be, obviously there are multiple iterations of these charging stations. And I know we want to get on this quick, but we'll have options for which kind of station we want to go with.
Like design-wise?
Yeah, well, we haven't done it because like Roger's saying, I've seen, if you can be down with our, with our deals, offices, for instance, in Leicester, they've got charging stations with solar panels directly on top. So the, the chargers themselves are collecting free energy from the sun. If it's, if it's a minor upgrade, I don't get all for that. So, you know, I, I just get the sense that, you know, folks on council would like that a little bit, but certainly what we, what we mentioned earlier.
Yeah, so the charging stations themselves, we have a quote for a specific brand and a specific model that we use. We can't do in January. The solar panels, on the other hand, there's a myriad of options as far as design, how you want to, how you want it to look, how much power it can produce.
Batteries.
Yeah, all, all of that stuff can be customized really as much as you want. It's a matter, it's a fundamental matter of investment. And to your point, Roger, about tracking, one of the reasons that we selected the charging brand and variety that we did is because it houses all that capability built into it.
Because you have to record it.
We do have to record it. That's right.
Maybe Henry, I'll just want to ask a question about that one here. So the $77,000 that we have already built into the budget, that money was left over from the solar panel project.
So I'll make a motion that we, yes, authorize Daniel to really add and pursue the DOT charging rebate agreement with the SDQ.
It's signed in all documents?
I'll second that.
All those are favorites?
Now we get the dollars.
Let's start with cheap, parking lot striping. Crosswalks are recorded. You need to deal with the same space that we're in.
Crosswalks stop for parking lots.
Let me just burst it up.
Well, is that, how old, Sue, is our pavement? Yes, what, 10 years, give or take?
We moved into this building in February of 20, I'm sorry, yeah, 2011. And the parking lot with the paving, it's not a yes or no, it's not a simple answer because we've added as we've gone along.
Roughly.
The original 10 years, but not all of it is 10 years. I think if you have questions regarding how soon it needs to be repaved, we should be asking Nicole, and she is on the call.
Have we ever had it resealed? Have we ever had it resealed? Have my parking lots resealed at work?
I don't know that we have. I don't know. Nicole, do you know the answer to that question, if we ever had it resealed?
No, not to my knowledge. I do not believe we've ever had it resealed.
The history is that the parking lot has never been sealed, as far as I remember it. And so the reason I bring this up is that it might be time to reseal it. Well, I know the $4,000 is, is a Mickey Mouse amount, but I don't want to reseal it, you know, a month after we've restripped it. So is that, can we get some people to come out and look at it and see, well, just giving example, is that about four or five years ago, is that I had our driveway there at the house redone. Well, so what the guy told me, he said, every other year is that if it's a low traffic, which sometimes I think our driveway's got more people than the interstate. But is that, he said that probably every second year or every third year, it needs to be resealed. And so is that, what I'm thinking is that DOT went down Church Street and repaved that. While DOT was down the railroad tracks, Southern Bell was up here at the other end, cutting a ditch through the new pavement. Well, so is that, let's get a little more information on this. Is that, get someone to come out and look at it and says, you don't mean to reseal it for five years?
If you were to apply for PAL bill funds, the road portion, not the parking lot, could be paid for once we receive it?
That was my next question. Where are we with the PAL bill?
So the way we would do that this year is to fill out the statement certification that we do on the back on roads, which would be the portions of town center drive. We have to submit the map showing those roads and mileage. And then the money will be allocated, the first allocation would be October 1st and the second one would be January. I don't know if it's the 1st of January, but it's in January following here. And yes, that money, the purpose of PAL bill is primarily for the construction maintenance of streets, resourcing our streets. So certainly the portions that are considered the street would be covered by that funding. To your point about the resealing, Roger, we didn't look into that at this point. It does need to happen. It could happen right now, but in terms of capital expense, we were looking at it in another year, subsequent to here. And quite frankly, the restriking probably should happen every year or every other year, considering how much traffic we have here.
I just looked at an old estimate, I had like 108,000 square feet of ceiling, it was like $18,000. That's a couple of years old, but maybe we're still just to strive.
I'd like to put off the restripping until we have a little more information on the, on the ceiling part of it.
So power bill, this fund will become available, did I understand right till the first of the year?
We would, yeah, that's right. We would budget for that in this coming fiscal year. The allocation from the state will not be received until October.
So it might be another year before we begin to reseal it?
It's possible, yes, if you, if you wanted to use power bill funding to cover a portion of it.
Do we know how much the possibly power bill money would get? And how do they do the allotments? Like if you're going to get a hundred thousand, is it 50/50 or how do they do that?
It's 50/50 and it's based off of your population and road mileage. Last year's allocation numbers equated to a hundred and forty thousand dollars for, based on the survey town, or the survey population. And it's road mileage, which is, I don't know, a few tons of miles, something like that.
That's man, that's population and road mileage?
It's 79% based off your population and 25% based off your road mileage.
So 25% of that 145 would come?
No.
And get a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
It's a hundred and forty thousand dollars total. The way you reach that is you use their formula, they calculate on per capita basis or per person. They allocate a certain amount of money. I don't remember what the figure was at the time. But they also allocate a certain amount of money for, based on your population numbers. When you add those two together, you get 140. So you would get 70,000 in October and 70,000 in January.
So I guess the clear question is, the road mileage is based on just this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's okay. It's only based on those townhomes and then towns. So do you want to take these one at a time or do you want to vote on each one as we go?
I'm really okay with the striping.
Go ahead now.
I didn't find out if I was interrupting something.
No.
Apologies if I did that inadvertently. I'm okay with striping and doing it this year. In subsequent years, under the understanding that it should be done every year, I would love for that to be covered as a power bill item. And I can only imagine how well those stripes would pump if we have brand new asphalt out there or brand new sealed part, part lot and road coming in into the, into the park. But I have noticed the wear on the stripes as I come to the park. As a safety issue, especially with the, walking back forth there in front of the dog park and other pedestrian heavy areas. I would, I would think this would be kind of something we would want to do. If we want to put it off and give more information, I'm okay with that as well. But I would, I would argue it's kind of a small thing that maybe we should pursue. That's fine, not too sad.
Sue, did I understand you said that the power bill would not pay for the parking lot striping? My hard answer is it only covers crosswalks.
That's correct. It only would cover the public road component of the, of the park. One can make an argument that that parking right up here, as you're coming up the hill before you turn right, that little rail park could be considered part of the road. Because you cannot hold a parking which can be considered part of the roadway. I don't know that I would go that route, but you could use a portion of for that.
I mean, I've been, you know, I've been all over the parking lots out here and quite a bit. I think we're quite a few years away from needing to reseal or repay either one. So I'm okay with restripping. I think we would get our money's worth out of the straps and would put them on the way and spend the right bit on. Before we would need to cover it up with sealing or repaving.
Is there a motion? We don't want your time, we don't want your agree.
We just don't want to talk about the striping because it's scratchable.
Does somebody have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the striping project. Sue, do I need to authorize Daniel to sign any paperwork or have?
Not on this one.
Okay.
We've taken care of all of the agreements?
Okay, thank you.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Wait, motion, is that all of us agree with?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Yes.
No, no.
Roger, four to one.
Okay, I thought he raised his hand and said aye.
He said aye, opposed.
Okay.
All right, so just going down the list, next is a large format printer, which we talked about previously. And Lindsay, we would use for big maps, our big pictures when we have public input. And Roger, you didn't have your recommendations from your internal history, right? You didn't want to make recommendations from your career?
No. Because of my corporate.
Because of your connection.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the large format printer. I would second that answer.
Motion, that's second, I was in favor of the large format printer, aye. Opposed? We have the permit software. So I would be in favor of going our own, not being beholden to the county, depending on which way they go. And God forbid they change their mind midstream and they're like, hey, I'd like to be kind of independent.
I agree, Mary Davidson. And the big thing for me, having had to go from an enterprise software and hardware background, is that, like you said, you don't want to be on the hook. You also don't want to be in a position of needs support and then having to run through all the various layers in Henderson County to do some infrastructure problem. Or heaven forbid you have a database issue where you've lost some of your data and you can't find the right person to talk to, to talk to somebody at the vendor. And so I, I think, I think moving ahead with this is, is something we want to do on our own. And certainly we don't want to have connectivity with the county, be able to monitor projects that are going on there and vice versa. But it makes so much more sense to me to have our own system and to be able to call and rattle the vendor if we have to. I'm in favor.
I'm okay with it as well. I appreciate you guys doing your due diligence to check that, to see what the cost savings were. And I think we know that to everybody to research that. And you guys have done that. So I'm good with it. Again, my whole hangup is just as long as we can share information between the two, that's.
Yeah. And I've discussed that with the vendor and there are ways to do that. It can be automated. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about that as a functionality of what I do. And I failed to mention to Mr. Gatsby's point from the vision session. I did, I was providing some references from the vendor, providing municipalities and towns across the state, across the country. All of who, any of those folks who responded to my questions were extremely positive, learned reviews. They were honest about having some challenges with implementation, but I think that's normal with any software like this. I've gone through this before with the same vendor. And I can say honestly that there were some hiccups, but best life product is very sound once it's up and running. It'd be onsite training, so anyone within the organization who will get to use it will get the onsite training. So it's a great product.
Is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the permits software.
I'll say that. Am I always in favor of purchase of healthy permits software? Aye. opposed? That was you and us, Sue.
Thank you.
Okay, storage bins.
I touched on these a little bit in the introduction. Again, Nicole is on the line if you have specific questions about used location, anything like that. But again, this would be to provide some bulk storage of materials so that we don't have to go buy, you know, bags of mulch, for example, for gravel. If you have it stored really accessible when you need it. Nicole, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. You know, one of the big things is especially during mulching season, you know, we have to get, it's much more cost effective to buy in bulk. But it's also a weeks long process to do. And we are just always in a constant need of dirt, ruts from where people have, you know, missed the edge of the driveway. And we need the ability to be able to have some and pack it on hand to fix those situations because they're tripping hazards. And, and again, I think just the aesthetics of it, of putting things in the parking lot is just not, not practical.
So Nicole, is that having the bins in the parking lot, why is it not practical? It'd be a whole lot closer if you're putting out mulch instead of driving the tractor, whatever, down to the maintenance shed.
Again, I think a lot of the issues is it takes up parking and it sits, you know, it has to sit there for, for weeks on end. And especially now with our baseball field up and getting used, we're going to need all the parking we can get. And taking any spaces for things like dirt and mulch. And we can't leave it there year round. It's just not aesthetically pleasing and just not practical.
So is that. Last year, this, this came up. And so actually, it's the time with the stamps. Is that I had a dump truck driver, the concrete guy come over, come over here with me on Saturday. And so we get with the stamps, the concrete guy left. Well, from what I understand, in order to buy in bulk, to get a good deal, you'd have to have a tri axle dump truck. Now, between the bank and the maintenance building is about 70 foot, give or take. So is that if that dump truck is 40, 45, maybe, maybe 50 foot long. He said, Roger, he said, I've got the back end of the gravel road. I've got the back end twist and turn to try to line up to those bins. And he said, that's going to cost you money because that truck, in my time, is sitting there walling around and around and around. Now, going one step further is that. We, is that we talk about parking. Well, is that if we put the bins up in the parking lot next to the dumpster. Why can't some of the employees park there? They're at the maintenance building. They can walk right up the steps, come right in the back door of town hall. So this is, this is what I'm thinking is that we're not going to have mulch there year round. We're going to order mulch roughly March, April, give or take. We're going to put the mulch out, then the mulch will be done by this fall, give or take. So is that you say that it's haphazard and distracts from the visitors? Well, looking at it on the other side of coin, is that it shows that we're taking care of our park. So I don't agree with that statement. So I'd like to see the bins up there next to the dumpster. And I don't know what you call them, but these concrete barriers that are on the interstate. We buy some of them. And that way is that you can get a tractor trailer load of mulch, let them back right up there and dump it. And then is that we'll probably need some dirt, maybe some sand for the ball field. We can always add to it. So all we're doing is burning up one or two parking places. But we gain that with employees potentially parking down at the maintenance shed. Now, is that having driven a big truck. Is that it's a whole lot easier to pull up, back right into the hole, dump it, you're headed out, you're gone. So that will save you on cost. The other thing is that, this is another reason that, that I like the front loader on the tractor. Is that if, if and when you guys decide to put out mulch, you can run in there with that front end loader. Get you a bucket full and you're already out in the park. You're not walling around. So not only do you save on tractor wear and tear, you save on labor cost. Because instead of it taking 10 minutes or 15 minutes, coming down the maintenance shed and getting mulch, you can get it in five minutes. So I'm willing to take the chance, take the heat of putting the bin, bins up next to the dumpster. And if we do it right, I look at this to mend the goal, is that we can work off two, two parking places. But they're against the dumpster. And if parking becomes an issue, then maybe Daniel needs to redirect the employees to park next to the maintenance shed. Then that way we're not burned up. Space at the maintenance shed with the bins. Logistically, it'd be a whole lot easier, a whole lot cheaper to put them up in the parking lot.
I think for me, my concern with the parking is that we're not going to escape the parking thing. So I think the parking thing is a viewpoint. If we're looking at adding more amenities to the park, we're potentially going to drop more people. So saying we're not going to have enough parking to me is a viewpoint because we're going to have to add parking if we add more amenities. That's just the fact of it. So if we're already cramped, eventually we're going to have to put another parking lot somewhere. So I'm not too worried about the parking thing for me. What type of, what are the bins of, I don't even know what the bins of are. Are they concrete barrier bins like what you see at the mulch yard? Do they have like a couple or what is, what are they?
Nicole, do you recall what we got that quote for last year?
The, the quote was definitely for at least the one side that faces the park to be a little more decorative. So it fits in with the, but definitely not all sides. It was the, the side facing out in the park was a little bit more decorative stone.
Sir, I guess that's what, what material, I guess that's what I'm struggling with because I'm picturing, like I said, I don't know what it looks like. So it's like 20,000 for bins of like, those are some of those bins. I don't know. That's what I'm struggling with. I'm having the same problem. Okay, that's, I'm like a van 20,000, it's like I'm building one out of a couple barriers. I hear 30,000, I'm thinking about my trash can at the house. Do we have any visual representation, Nicole, or?
We don't, we can Google search pictures if you want, but we don't have anything to show you right now. We can, we can certainly bring that back if that's a deciding factor.
But maybe to bring us some options for studies and cost comparison, parking lot versus lower maintenance building?
Okay.
I'll shake his head.
Okay, so we're going to have to take one out.
Can I ask a question for you? So Daniel, last year you included, if I remember right, a truck and a trailer. But there was no trailer on this compared to what?
We kicked the trailer.
There's not been support for the trailer since it was originally approved or initially presented. I didn't want to waste your time with.
Okay, I think in, you know, we're within three miles of the biggest mulch yard anywhere around. I think in, you know, we're within three miles of the biggest mulch yard anywhere around here. So if we, if we build with a truck and a dump trailer, we could potentially not have the need for storage here on the town sack and save that money. That trailer would come in handy for, for hauling a lot more around, hauling rocks, hauling brush, do a lot of things. That's just not it.
Randy, Randy brings up a good point. Is that do we really need the storage bins?
Yes. Yes.
Why?
To store material. Like Nicole was saying with the mulch, when we get that, it's a couple yards worth of mulch, I think. It sits out in the back parking lot for a few weeks while they, they get to do as they can, doing their daily cleaning and mowing and all that sort of thing. And it's just not a good use of space. I mean, it's as simple as that. It's, it's, we have people who come to the park to visit, I mean, who come to visit the park and are used to seeing the wonderful amenities that are so well maintained. And there's a credit to you all for the investments you've made. And I, for one, just feel like it's more slightly to place these, these, these bins at the maintenance facility where we're already doing that kind of work, already have that kind of equipment stored. And it's a little, it's down a little bit of a hole. So if you're out in the park, you're not going to see anything, any bulk material stored. I mean, it's, it's, location is, is a, is a separate discussion in my mind versus a need. There is a need for the bulk storage material, whether it's next to the dumpster or it's at the maintenance facility is, is to be decided. I'm, I'm thinking about it from, from a design point of view that it makes more sense to kind of tuck this away if we can, not put it out in the park somewhere.
I can understand the buying in bulk. I really can. Is that if you're going to do something, that's the way to do it. But as Randy pointed out, is that you can leave here in the pickup, and that's undoubtedly yes. And go over there and get a truckload and be back in thirty minutes or less.
But they don't get all put out at one time, I think is the point. It may, it may be a weeks-long project to work on mulch, you know? They don't want to, we don't want to sit in the back of the truck.
If you have a dump trailer, you could just go and get it and throw it out as you need.
But then she said also they use a lot of dirt filling in ruts and holes. So you, you know, which one?
I can see that a little bit, you know? I think if you had a trailer and just go and get it as you needed it, it's still a problem.
I just, I just can't see twenty thousand dollars worth for the, for the storage bins.
My only concern too about being on there, I don't know anything about dirt, so you're talking the wrong guy. But I mean, if we're going to keep dirt year-round, it's not need to be covered to keep it. I mean, if it rains on it all the time, it's going to wash out the park. I mean, how are we going to control it? Well, that's, I mean, and the grain's right there beside where we're going to put it.
Well, that's where maybe the bin design would answer those questions.
That's a yes.
See, I think like you, you dump a loaded mulch in the parking lot in space, I'm going to be the first ones to climb into the top of that mulch pile. And I'm assuming every other kid walking around the track is doing the same thing.
Well, or somebody with a pickup coming in at night taking mulch for their home, right? And we need to think about security as well. So that's, that's something that, you know, I think, I think seeing some.
Some visual representation.
Representation, absolutely. Yes, I think that would help us, Daniel.
Sure, Dan. We can do that.
Okay, to the shelter design, case manager. So we all know and agree we need a better shelter. What were the reservations? I know last year obviously we didn't have as many. Are they, are shelter reservations sticking up?
They are starting to dig up now, yes.
Year before they were crazy.
I don't know about the year before. Nicole will know.
Last, we hit definitely record numbers on reservations. And we definitely, early on in COVID, things went down because we had to close it for a long time. But as soon as outdoor gatherings were permitted again, we saw a huge increase. And I think more importantly, I think it was touched on earlier. We get so many requests from people of, well, do I have to rent the whole shelter? I'm having a birthday party for, for my six-year-old and you have seating for a hundred and fifty and they want a little more intimate space. So I think that would be a huge benefit. And then lastly, one of the biggest, probably the biggest complaint I get in the park, especially from our walkers using the backside, is not having close access to the restroom because the restroom is on the front acreage of the park and they don't have that access on the back. So I think overall, this is a, a great project that has huge support. Before I got here, Pat did a survey specifically about this shelter and it overwhelmingly, people said it met their needs of what they wanted to see in the park. So.
All we're asking for right now is just to get the plans drawn. We're not actually moving the shelter in this.
Right. This money is specifically for getting together with the engineer and the architect, getting active plans that we can go out to bid with, just like we do with the baseball field. You put the whole package together and then you make the decision about construction at a later date.
So Sue, Daniel, or Dana, Nicole, I'm going to ask. But how much money did we make in fees off the picnic shelter in a good year without the, roughly? I mean, just, just the ballpark.
Sue, do you know that number? I definitely don't know offhand.
I, 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 I really do not know that number.
So are we thinking like ten thousand or?
No, not near that. It's not near that.
More like four thousand five hundred to six thousand.
Okay, okay. It. So. So our picnic shelter is being booked all of the time under normal circumstances. I know Matt, this past year's not normal, but normally, is it fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's fair.
So I guess is that I see this as an added burden to the staff. So if I want to reserve like picnic shelter A, it's unavailable. So, okay, then I go to picnic shelter B. And so then I'm going to get the phone call saying, okay, is that, I'd like to have it anyway. Is that I guess I'm concerned about spending the money for this extra picnic shelter. Now, one step further is the bathrooms. Now, is that, is that, Shane may want to come in because he's got little kids.
Of course, they just go to the woods.
Well, 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 so is that what I'm visualizing, and this is nuts. But is that you got Joey after playing ball, then all of a sudden he needs to go to the pot. Well, chances are it may be ten minutes late. And so that's why I would kind of support just the bathrooms. But how do we know that they will be used? Because there's no walking trail over there. And going back to Brian's saying about security is that so now we want to put lights in there. So that, so we don't have Wi-Fi access to the basketball court?
If we do, it could come from this building.
Well, we've got it down at, down at the river launch.
Hmm, I don't think we do.
I was down there the other day.
Okay.
So the access to Wi-Fi is at best not an issue. Now, the other set of restrooms, okay, theoretically I could see that. But we don't know, kind of like this agreement with Rodney, we don't know that's going to be used until we actually see kids running over here to the other bathroom. So I think that we're kind of getting the cart before the horse here.
So I've seen, you know, got the big shelter. So we have the picnic table with the cover, the single picnic table with the cover over near the playground. I've seen it packed with kids and they don't pay to rent that one, correct? That's just first person. I've seen that turned into parties several times. So we may be missing out on some revenue, listen smaller, I mean, not, it'll never make up. But, yeah.
Rental, rental opportunities. And I would back up Nicole in that there are many calls where people either they can't afford to rent what we charge for the large one, where they just don't want that space. So it would be a benefit to you, to younger families for a lower socioeconomic level.
Well, didn't we even change our fee schedule or the, the, because of that a couple of years ago? Because people didn't want to rent it for such a large block and so we had that.
Yes.
That's correct. The other thing I'd like to point out as far as use, we very often have to turn people away because we do not have space for them in our current shelter. They call for dates. They'll give us, you know, we'll have a whole month book up of Saturdays and Sundays that, that they look for space and they end up having to go elsewhere because we do not have space for them to use.
Randy, what were you going to ask?
I was just going to ask what our fee was for the big shelter right now. Is it a hundred dollars?
It's twenty-five dollars per hour with a two-hour minimum. So it's a minimum of fifty dollars to rent it.
And the, the shelter we're talking about, it's about half, half the size of Nicole and the shelter, you know?
It's even less. It holds six tables is what the design calls for.
So it's going to be back. This, the actual shelter part is comparable compared to the plumbing and the fixtures.
Correct. Yeah, most of the, most of the cost and intricacies of it is definitely the restroom. You know, the overhang with the shelter is not as far as cost. It's just an added bonus.
I think one of the things we might be guilty of doing right now is sort of envisioning what's back there and seeing it's going to stay like that. I think as we begin to develop that back section of the park and, and let some of the, the things that are in the, in the park's plan, we're going to see a need for more restrooms. I like the idea of the additional revenue from smaller, big new shelters as well. And this seems like it's been in our capital improvement plan for a while. We've been talking about it forever, it seems like. I, I just, I think it's a good idea. As Sue pointed out, I think having a target, a different socioeconomic group is pretty powerful. I'm not sure that I would personally want to go out and rent that huge picnic shelter for a smaller party, you know, birthday party or celebration or whatever. But if there were a smaller option available, we're going to kind of look back over there. I'd be much more inclined to do that. So I, I would like to move forward and see as the least pursue having this thing designed and bid out. I think I'm okay with the design of it and things like that. I think for me, my hesitation is, I feel like there's a lot of variables that we don't know. I'm not a fan of studies, so this is not what I'm proposing. It may be a very fluid process of design where maybe it's not like they come back with one design and it's like, this is what we're proposing. But maybe there's a couple of different things that we can look at in this as we move through it. There's a lot of communication between Nicole and us so that we're communicating as we go through it. So that if we want to run the water fountain at the ball field or if there's something else when they're running the line that we want to look at, then we can look at it at that time. And it's not like, where's the design and vote yes or no. That's my.
You know, like a phased design of bathroom and shelter.
We already have a preliminary design that is designed to match the other shelter. Nicole, do you know why that was originally designed?
I don't. Let me get that out of here.
And while she's looking that up, just to be clear, this is for putting the plans together for a bid package, which would include the final fixtures and finishes and things like that. That's not, those have not been decided at this point. It's been, if that room is this size, but not at a particular extent. And so this is not obligated to do anything. You can have this design done, ready, put it on the shelf when you're ready to bid, you can bid it out. This is only to get the design to a point where you can go and solicit it for it.
I have, sorry, a two thousand seventeen date, January of two thousand seventeen, that these plans were done. And I'm happy to walk these over to you all. I know, I know I wasn't even here then and several of you were not. So you may have not seen these original plans and drawings. So I'm happy to come, bring you a copy.
What were you going to say, Ryan? I was just going to say, go ahead, Joe, what? I'm comfortable with, I understand what you're saying. I just don't want it to get to the end when they, when we get the design at the end for the bid package, that it's just like, here's the design. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's my only concern. Other than that, I'm behind it.
Flexibility and choice, and choice of option.
Right. I mean, other than that, I'm behind it.
So really, I guess the only person on the council in January said it was Robert because we didn't come out till the end of the year. It was me, right? It's been a long process of plan. Probably been on that master plan.
But again, this is, you know, the, the preliminary designs, you know, obviously where it's in change. But part of that, you know, thirty thousand dollars is only the end here and where, and then you're obviously recording that. Here, so it's one, two, like thirty-nine, so you can be on this end in the restroom. So there's a lens room on this side, a living room on this side, probably in the middle. Water cup is on the outside and then, you know, picnic tables there in the middle. And then you call it, there's a nice space.
So this sits kind of below the basketball court?
Correct. So it'd be on the north side of the basketball court.
So how are you going to get utilities over there?
Well, that's all one part of this.
No, is that, is that record door underneath the road, the water, electricity and sewer. Is that, is that fair?
That's fair. Yes.
Okay.
And I guess we're going to tie into the solar. Are we going to put solar on this?
That is something we discussed, but I guess that's for you all to be honest about that.
I'll need to kind of stay there if it is.
Yeah, I agree. You could be careful of anything. Yeah, I think it's worth doing. If we're going to get the design, we should start to look and look what we do.
So let's, how much does this design will cost us?
The design, the bid package?
Yes.
Thirty thousand dollars is all we've got.
Other questions? Was there anyone making comments on this, pardon?
Have you had complaints because there's not enough restrooms?
Yes.
I'll stick at that.
In favor, Dan?
I.
Opposed? If one won. Okay, last item on the list today is the truck reported to the council. It's also, it's been on the plan for years, the lens around.
Have we, let's go. Have we got different quotes?
We're around building a state contract.
Well, is that it might be cheaper not going with the state contract. And I was talking to, well, the council members today is that the majority of the time, you can buy stuff cheaper not on the state contract and. And I'd like to see some bins. Now, is that, one of the, the, the last sentence, this is greater hauling and towing capacity. Or we don't haul?
Uh, there's just a section of mulch.
Do we know Nicole's had to use her own person, then you may have to get things supplied before.
I understand that, but if we, if we talk about mulch, so is that wherever we put the bins, you're gonna take the front end loader, you're gonna load it into truck, drive the truck to wherever, then you're gonna unload it. Why don't you just skip the stamp? Is it, that sounds like quite a bit of work. The other thing is that, why do we need towing capacity?
Excuse me, Daniel, I'm getting comments that the sound quality is muddy, like you're underwater.
Okay. The one thing I was talking about, if we're doing, if we're doing, if we're doing, don't try to, let the mulch or store, or mulch, it's kind of having storage bins here and we can go away with the storage bins and just ground back and forth with it.
And I don't know what you guys need. I guess this is one question. Have you guys wanted it, buying on a commercial F-250 cab and then putting it in a dump bed on the back of the truck versus regular, buy it? I mean, and maybe that gets you your dump bed and, and pull the truck up and where. I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean, you guys may want to consider that.
I would love a dump bed, a few trucks, but I do believe we need a regular standard bed would be our best and most use, um, in this situation. There's a lot of, a dump bed would be wonderful if I had multiple trucks to have one with a dump bed, but, um, I do love the idea of a dump trailer though.
Dude, are we keeping it a ranger? Is that part of this?
We are.
Do we, do it all in different danger?
Yes, there's, there are plenty of opportunities, I think, to have a smaller vehicle, uh, get around down, but we don't have any, the big full-size truck. But you can also get rid of the fuses.
So back to my question, is that what we will be towing?
Well, if we're getting a dump trailer, we would be towing that.
Okay.
Uh, you know, with the Banner Farm Road property requires maintenance, you know, quite a few towings and things over there to take care of. If, if it does, kind of, you know, pretty recorded, doing things up over there. And then just moving the equipment around that is needed, for example, for service, taking it wherever it needs to go.
Well, so we don't have to do anything with the truck and the tractor over on Banner Farm Road for a year. Is that part of the lease with the brewery is that they mow the grass? So that's, that's not an issue. Now, is that, this is awful expensive just to haul the vehicle or to haul the tractor here some bill and then for service. Now, is that last fiscal or last year, last calendar year, how much, how many times was the tractor in for service?
Nicole, do you know how much up there?
We only bought the tractor last year, so, um, it is, I think, been in for various reasons twice since we've owned it. Um, but a lot of it, and particularly with John Deere, uh, we just brought the mower in for service and the gator in for service. And we lose it for a week because we're dependent on their delivery schedule. They had the work complete within a day, but we lost a week with it because we don't have control over being able to get it and pick it up. Um, and bottom line, if, if we don't get a trailer tomorrow, that's no big deal, but buying a truck that has the capacity as we look at Banner Farm Road, future greenways, hopefully we'll have this truck for years to come. And even if there's not the need to get to the Banner Farm property today, we will have that need in the future.
So how much did May Tracker charge us for pickup and delivery, right?
Me does not charge us. They waive, it's a $30 fee. Again, the, the cost is not so much the issue as the loss of productivity because we don't have our, our equipment.
Well, is it, having tractors over there, you want to have that regardless. So whether you pick it up and deliver it to them, or they pick it up themselves, is that it's all based on their schedule. So is that you may have a piece of equipment over there that's broke. And so they may not get to it for two, three days, whether you pick it up, whether you deliver it or not. So is that, I'm for Randy's idea. Is that if we're going to get this dump trailer, to never eliminate the bins problem, but it also, if you're going to pull the dump trailer, then you need a three-quarter type truck. I, I'm okay with that. But I just want, is that, I just want, don't want this vehicle sitting out there. You know, especially a brand new vehicle sitting out there that we paid state contract money for, it's not being used. Now, will we use it the first year? Yes. But is that, I'm just trying to be a little prudent, I guess.
I understand that, but I assure you it will get used daily. Uh, we use it to haul recycle, we'll use it to haul recycling. Currently, when, um, staff has to go pick up fertilizer and seed and things like that, we have to take multiple trips because we can't. It takes three trips to fit a full pallet into that little ranger. Um, so we have many, many uses for this truck and it will be well-used. We are a maintenance department and a full-sized pickup truck would definitely be well-utilized. Um, and I just don't like to see myself or my staff have to use their personal vehicles to do their job.
Just for the record, that was the person that Roger was talking to, is one of the items on state contract. Well, I'll read that book story. My first started working with the NCA. My boss called me, he lost him, handed me a catalog and he said, you need to be got desk, you're off. Yeah? I said, yeah, that is, yeah. And he said, well, if you got a desk, you can just come back and tell us more. Well, I looked through the catalog, it was a state contract. The cheapest desk kind of declines by a lot. So a lot of the things you buy on state contract are really inflated. And I said, look, I don't want to spend $500,000 on a desk, but when you have to, the office supply has the contract with the state. So, you know, I'm very, I'm very familiar with that aspect of buying things on state contract. There were ways to get around that. I figured if we learned how to do that, first time we buy, uh, computer components that I would, uh, apply certain specs to, I would have them working with additional vendors that I have to buy at a different company, not have to buy them off state contract because they're too expensive. I am happy to have researched this vehicle, a lot of that this week. Uh, we are getting very, this is $35,000 vehicle tank, this is all right, this is the military decals applied, it's everything we would need to get the ground running. Okay. Now, if you price it through any dealership or website, you say, all right, just a plain little stock, four F-250, four by four, um, they're, they're not asking you $38,000. That's our stock bottom price. And we're getting it for $35,000 with the customization that we've done, so. My, my sense, like Roger, anytime somebody says state contract, I immediately think about $5,000 desk. For whatever reason, we're getting spectacular on this vehicle, buying it through state contract. So, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time too. I see the need for it. Um, I, I do appreciate the most batting this around and making sure we give the right piece of equipment at the right price, but I, I think we do need the time measure of the service that person's vehicle using that absolute head capital.
I would still like to see some quotes from Chevrolet and Dodge. State is that, let's just take, take this for example, the Ford. Is that, has anybody went out there and talked to them?
No, we brought this up initially, and we mentioned the state contract, it's going to be agreeable for. So that was a, that was a robust stuff. We've not reached out to Chevy for dollars in the way about our quote. We've been trying to deal with that budget council.
I won't say, but it comes to vehicles, you won't beat state contract. The reason why is because you're talking about state buys tens of thousands because you got high control, you've got every share of the market, every county, every city, there's five vehicles off the grant. So you won't beat the price for vehicles on state contract. Now, Dodge, Chevrolet and Ford all have vehicles on state. I don't know what, I can tell you from what I know, Chevrolet's going to be worth basically for. I don't know where Dodge is.
But then, is that what meant the who was, just to go to the dealer and ask?
There's no harm in asking. I would like, I'd like to see us at least give them the opportunity to, in Henderson, Tennessee, and maybe give them the opportunity to say.
There becomes pursuit, they can't be. And, and that's a thing that's all.
Yeah, I love this. I just want to say for the record, we can't limit it to Henderson, Tennessee, yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
But we can, we can start with local dealerships first.
Okay.
So we want to. But that's what we'll do. So we will reach out to local dealerships and give them the specs that we're asking for for the F-250, to see what they can do to come on.
Good. So we decided on everything, coming back to sort of then with the first.
Yep.
Getting on to, on agenda two, I.
Trail fund request.
And Daniel, before we move on, I'm still getting comments that they, they can't understand. The sound is, quality is poor.
For everybody?
For everybody.
Okay.
Not just you. I'm sorry. I don't think I made that clear.
Man.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
Oh, you brought in an empty bottle?
I drank it.
We're just gonna have to handle it.
No.
Nothing we can do.
And there's nothing we can do?
Yeah.
Um, Brian, I heard you say your bottle's empty if you want. Wait for water, please.
No, because she'll get mad.
Then we get up to go to the bathroom.
I say goes, makes sense, she'll get mad.
You're like our little hourglass for breaks. Drink a bottle of water and then she's gonna think of us. Did you put that in the release out with you?
No, I will.
So is there, is there an answer to the bubbles down? Maybe not. We're not.
Temperament's up instead.
I speak louder than you loud. It's not usually loud at all.
You can turn it down.
I tried, it's not. It helps yourself.
Did you drop both sides?
Oh, I just. I was going to go back on.
It seemed like you were trying to leave right now. You don't hear me very good. Some of our more hard of hearing, I won't remember to turn that up.
Well.
So Jim, seriously.
Somebody. Hold my mouth. This is so. You can see the dress. Thirty-three years old.
Yes.
And you don't have a hat to make. I was having a sassy.
But she was. That was very sweet.
I said, small, how did you don't like it at all?
One's for the headphones, one's for the speaker on. But they have the headphone jack on those ones.
But my list, I didn't work on my rest, I don't have it.
Thank you, I hardwired them again.
Okay. All right, go back. I'm a break. Roger had one question on the capital projects.
Is that, we, we talked about in the visiting, is that better, Sue? Is that, we, we talked about in the visiting, and maybe even the meeters will go, about expanding town hall. I think that that would be a capital project. So I don't see it listed here.
Do you want to, do you want to add that as?
Yes.
Okay, so do you want us to come back to you at your next meeting with the, a cost to do like we did with the shelter for our design? Or do you just want to make sure it's incorporated in it?
Well, I don't know the answer to your question.
Let me make a suggestion.
Okay.
So why don't we talk about it at your first budget workshop coming up in April? And we'll present some options, um, move forward. I, I really think it would be wise. I know no one likes studies, not you, Travis, or myself, but that's a long-term investment. And so I think it's worth bringing in someone who does this for a living and says, you need X amount of space for your council, you're, you know, you're gonna expand your employee space by a couple of people, whatever, you know, this is what it would look like. So that would, in fact, that was kind of your recommendation when we got to that point, would be to allocate money in professional services account, so that we could hire that expert to come in and help us design a building. And then that will give us everything. A big jumpstart on what we need to know as far as the design costs.
Okay. That's fine.
Your book. Thank you.
Okay, so now to the ordinance amendments. I've been promised this is going to be a light, light touch on this.
Yes. Um, so in front of you, you have a stack report followed by a. So in front of you, you have a statute report followed by a bunch of attachments. And this is all regarding North Carolina general statute one sixty D. As we've talked about this a little bit in the past, so I'm just gonna hit some highlights of that to the public. Of those books on state. The set, the general assembly merged two sections of state law. One fifty-three A, one sixty A, those were for counties and municipalities respectively. And the result of that was one sixty D which merges and consolidates development standards for counties and municipalities across the state. So for purposes of the review, everything in the packet that is new text is blue and underlined. Everything that is supposed to be removed is red and stricken. Many of the changes that you're going to see tonight are just like the example on the front page in the statute report where it says. One sixty A, article nineteen, that's stricken. And one sixty D, article nine, part three is added. And that is simply updating a reference to a section of state law and no bearing on the ordinance, it's just for updating that. So I'll just start from the beginning. With one fifty, chapter one fifty, this is under title fifteen, land usage of town code. The only changes in this, in this chapter are references to one sixty D. So for example, if you look at the end of line seven, beginning of line eight, you'll see that. NC, excuse me, GS section one sixty D nine oh three is added, and one fifty-three A is stricken. And those are the only things that are changed in this chapter. Any questions about that? Moving on to the next section, this is attachment B, title fifteen, land uses, chapter one fifty-one, manufactured home parks. The only changes in this section is one type of and two major special use permit. So if you looked on line thirty-one in the packet. Which is on page four, you'll see that under, I'll just start from the top. Manufactured home park developments may be located in MR thirty, MRNU, MRNC. Scratch out, subject to the approval of a major special use permit. Under the one sixty D standards, the term conditional use permit is no longer valid. They will, anything that was a conditional use permit or is a conditional use permit today, it will be referred to as a special use permit. And so a major special use permit is what town council currently would review as a special use permit. So all we do is add the major, possible, special use. Now, there's also minor special use permit. And those are categories of permits that currently the board of adjustment repeats. So if you substitute the word conditional use permit for minor special use permit, it's the exact same process. viewed by the same board, all that kind of stuff. So again, in this chapter, one fifty-one, there's a reference update, the definition is updated. And then on line eight eighty-nine, there was typo. And that should read. Excuse me, eight eighty-two. That chapter and coordinates one fifty-four point nine nine five, that should actually say one fifty-four point five. And I should also remind you that the purpose of this evening is to go over these, answer any questions you might have. The only action required if you're ready for would be to set a public hearing date for later business, so that you could. You have to hold that here and then adopt the changes. Any questions on one fifty-one before we move on?
Oh. Attachment A, line ninety-four.
Yep.
It says about unfettered access. And so. It says emergency services in the town of Wilson are fire and rescue. Shouldn't that be a standalone? Because the town don't have.
Strike town.
Why don't you bother to put the town, comma, and that way everybody gets it.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's gonna be my next point, is that the town needs unfettered access to these. And the fire department needs for emergency services leaders.
And it really should be all the fire departments in case someone's covered.
Yeah, I'm sure that's just like a grammar thing.
It's clarification, we can say something, we can change that.
But I think there's, there's a standard for that.
All right, so any other questions about one fifty or one fifty-one before we move on to the next one? Okay, so if you look at attachment C. Which is chapter one fifty-two, nuisances. Couple of changes here. First of all, as you know, we work on the noise ordinance. And that language is slated to be inserted into nuisance chapter when the time is right. But as far as the review goes, we didn't want to confuse you all on the playing board for the public. And try to adopt, adopt both orders at the same time. So what you're looking at tonight, chapter one fifty-two, are only changes on nuisance, excuse me. From one sixty D, but applied to nuisances, we wouldn't have those ever. So if you look on line two seventy-five. You will see the term evidentiary hearing. And that is a new term that the state is using for. Quasi judicial hearing where evidence is required. So they're just sloping out the two words without, you'll see this in the next chapter about zoning. In line fifty-four, there's legislative hearings and evidentiary hearings. And legislatures replacing the word public hearing, evidentiary is replacing quasi judicial. And then on the very end of the chapter, you'll see on the very last page on line two twenty-seven, verification of development approvals. That language comes straight out of one sixty D. It's something that we need to approve to be consistent with the law. And I did on that one. Moving on to vested rights, this is chapter one fifty-five. Remember, reminder, we did kiss chapter one fifty-three and one fifty-four for tonight purely because there's a lot of content in those two chapters. And we didn't want to try to do all at once. But you'll see what we do next meeting. So yeah, chapter one fifty-five, vested rights is in attachment B. The only things that are in here deal with updating references on line two, for example. It references one sixty and three eighty-five point one, updated to reflect the new statute. And. That is, that is it, there's a couple more references later on. No, no policy changes in the substance, we were just replacing one sixty A reference for one sixty P. And that's it.
Line one oh two.
Of, of those same packet, the vested rights?
Yes.
One oh two, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
The long-term multi-things projects, at least twenty-five, they're going to invest enough to seven years, is that new? That's new?
Yes, that's new in the state statute.
So that's a state one?
Yes. Yeah, that's, if you're curious, it's one sixty D, that's one oh eight F. That's the definition of what we say is development, and that's the vested right that comes with it. Again, no action required tonight, although if you're uncomfortable. The next step would be to set a public hearing date so that we can prioritize for it. Take the word out for the public and you can hold that here and get your next one. I guess it would be the twenty-fifth of March, that you'd be able to hold that here. Right?
Do you want to do the architectural?
I'll do that separate.
Okay.
So we're doing architectural separate.
So did you, did you advise me to go ahead and set that? Yes, I would, sorry.
You wanted to talk, want to talk.
For the public hearing?
Yeah.
I don't think you need to do that. I think you can just do it all in one motion, that you want to set a public hearing for these chapters. I would just list the chapters individually as part of that motion.
So I make the motion that we allow Daniel to schedule a public hearing for chapters. One fifty-one, one fifty, one fifty-two, and one fifty-five.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
I'm sorry, who seconded? Thank you.
All right, so tied to ordinance amendments, but not specific to one sixty D. One of the, excuse me, one of the changes. We were directed to look into at the October workshop was updates to the architectural standards specifically about. Or one, one in particular was the exemption for. Accessory structures. And so I'll just begin on page one of attachment A, which is the court or open legislature, which is where these laws and the ordinance now. Again, on line sixteen, you'll see that the word conditional uses has been stricken because that new term for that is special use permit. So whenever there's a new permit was required, it simply happened to be a special use permit. Some of these changes are a direct result of having administered this ordinance for nearly a year now. And finding weaknesses in the way it was originally drafted through no one's fault. It just sounded good on paper, but when we actually started to apply it, we realized there was holes in it. And so their frontage requires all principal structure façades. And then frontage, all principal structure façades and accessory structure façades. Which are located in the front or side yard of the principal structure shall be required to meet the requirements. So this is saying that if you can see the structure in the front yard or it's next to the building. Then all of the size would have to match the same standards as the principal structure. However, if you have accessory structure behind the principal structure, then it's not required to meet any of the standards. But we, we could go further in that. And say if the building is visible from the road, but it's only twenty-five percent of the size of the main structure, it too could be exempt. There's really no right or wrong answer in that. It's gonna vary based on the size of the building. It's got, you know, ten thousand square foot building. You could have a twenty nine hundred square foot building next to it, and it could be exempt or not, depending on how much further you want to go. And the facade visibility requirements will be assessed from the right of way within five hundred feet of the following roads. And that is done, this was an intentional change because from an administrative point of view. What you can see from the road versus the, what I believe is the intent, intent of this ordinance are two different things. You can see a lot further than what is really practical for someone to have to comply with this ordinance. And it's also difficult to, to kind of measure that. I mean, I'm not quite six feet tall, but someone who is over six feet tall driving down the road, they might see it, or they can't see. So it's, it's a little bit too subjective to be properly administered. Just would just clarify that a little bit. And then. Another change is on line forty-four, the calculation of acceptable materials includes windows and doors. Currently, that's not allowed, it's not explicitly allowed in the ordinance, it's not prohibited. So we had used it one time for the large distribution center. We allowed them to use windows and doors, which allowed them to break up the facade with windows. As opposed to having one giant facade with a window over twenty feet. In another, which in our opinion, was a better design than what they originally proposed. The other example of it is the, I forget the name, the dealership going out on Old Highway Road. What's that?
Hill's Machine.
Yeah, Hill's Machine, hey, Hill's Machine, yes. They, they designed their building. To comply with the letter of the standard on one particular facade, and it's very, very unattractive outside. And did that sort of despite what the ordinance now said. And it's just not an attractive design and in my opinion defeats the purpose of, of the field the way it was written. So we're trying to figure out a more uniform way to apply this and pass the specificity as to what's allowed. And also what is not allowed. For example, the ordinance says it was approved last year, then explicitly limits, prohibit vinyl siding, corrugated metal siding. I know that sounds simple, but there are so many materials out there that are made of metal. But have a finish on them that might look like stucco or might look like something else. But they're still metal and you can typically tell that they're still metal, just have some sort of finish on them. Again, based on my experience with this board going through this process, the intention was to. Limit it to natural materials or natural looking materials only. And, and having faced project review with people trying to. Get around this particular standard. People can get very creative and end up with something that might look natural. But it is not in line with what I believe to be the spirit and intent of the, of this particular particular section of bill. That's my case. And this is same as, same as the last set of ordinances. No direct action required tonight unless you want us to send it back to the playing board or modify something. The next step would be a public hearing.
So I've got a couple of things. And then, so with accessory structures. There's nothing that I can tell that would limit the size of the accessory structure.
That's right.
Right, so I can build a, I could have ten acres up here on two eighty and build a five thousand square foot office. And a thirty thousand square foot warehouse behind it. I could call that my accessory structure. And it could be just what we were trying to get away from when I went, you know, disorderment stuff. So it'd be prudent to put a. Your accessory structure could only be twenty-five percent of your, I mean, your primary structure. Something like that.
Certainly, yeah, there's, there's no definition of what is an accessory structure in the ordinance right now that I recall.
Because I'm afraid if we don't do something like that, then we're gonna have some like. A very small office somewhere and. Build a, never build it right out back and call that the accessory structure. And the other thing I had was the. Like the. The materials for the calculation of the, one of the, or the materials that you have to use. Including windows and doors. So I'm just gonna take the Hill's machinery building out here. So if they had faced their building toward hole one eighty-one there. And had four big. Loaded dock bays with four big doors on it. That could have technically, if we had included that in the calculation, the rest of the facade could have been never built. So have you proposed getting around something like that? Because the intent was to have at least seventy-five percent. And that's why I wanted the calculations for windows and doors taken out, so something like that wouldn't happen.
Right. You, you would have to define which facade of the building. You basically have to define how that relates to the road. So you would call the front of the building. The wall visible from the public road. And then you would say on the front facing side of the building. Windows and doors are not accounted for, and you can't count doors or something like that. You'd have to define what each side of the building is from the road, because that's the only constant you'd have to work with. You couldn't do it from the property line. And you would say something like, again, if you're looking at, if using one eighty-one as the, as the main road there. What they, based on that design, what I recall, main entrance is actually on the side of the building. If you're looking at it from one eighty-one, and they have sort of a service side facing. side facing the public from the highway. But you can specify to say on the front wall, which is defined as the following, these standards apply. And those standards could be transparent windows can be counted, but garage door, bay doors, whatever, however you want to define that, cannot be counted in that calculation.
Now, okay, we're leaving some of this up to the interpretation of the zoning administration of the town issue of the program.
Right.
Because I feel like y'all will understand where the town wants to be with this ordinance. But I don't know that that's completely fair to applicant whenever they're coming in, trying to determine what they need to do, make their permit up.
Right. You know, it's specific to be spelled out. And you can spell it out, but still leave room for interpretation, leave it up to the starting administrator to make the following interpretations to certain extent. But you'd want it spelled out pretty clearly that the front wall is the wall immediately adjacent to the public road. The side wall is opposite of that or wherever you have your to find that. Visible to public, excuse me, the property neighbors. The rear wall is the wall opposite of the front wall, something like that. And then you would set specific standards for each wall, which is not unheard of. Ordinances are written, are written that way to specifically address what you're talking about.
Okay, but I would definitely like to see something that would, that accessory structure could not be, I'm just going to call it 20%, more 20% as large as the primary structure. On this pro.
If you want to, I'm comfortable making the changes based on the feedback. Again, not required to take any action on this at this point.
And these were just my thoughts.
I mean, I agree a little bit with Randy. You've had, how many people have fell under this commercially? Two or three?
What did you say, Shane?
Circle K.
Circle K. So I guess four?
So and out of the four, you already had one person who basically.
Bowed up.
Who bowed up and didn't want to meet the spirit of what we were trying to do.
Spies, yeah.
Yes. So my thing is that you've only had four and you already had one person who's done it.
Right.
So.
Which is not going to change.
That's my point, Eric. That's not going to change. And that's my point is, I agree with Randy. There has to be some happy medium where what we're trying to accomplish, that power is, I hate to say give it to the town, but in essence, that's where it meets the law. The town needs to have the final say so of saying, yes, this meets the spirit or no, it doesn't. You know, if we, and this is just a question, if you took out the calculation of materials being windows and doors, if I had to put five bay doors on the front of my building, could I come and ask for a variance? And part of the variance is that I want this calculation to change in the design and then whoever reviews that can say, yes, I'll approve it because you've met the overall spirit of what we're trying to accomplish.
So if you, okay, so if you came with a design for four bay doors across the front of your building and the calculation doesn't allow that, you would come to the board of adjustment seeking a variance from that particular standard. You wouldn't ask a lot about the formula. You're just asking for relief from that standard, correct? Yes, you could request that.
And then, because then I'm going to give you a picture of what I'm proposing it liberalized.
That's right.
And I've got my natural materials over here, but I can't do it because of this. So then someone can look at it and say, yes, that meets the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish. It's okay.
Right. Yeah. And that'll always be an option for these standards as well as other developments and the variance, with the case to be made. Sure, could be, could be considered.
I guess that's why, that's why I'm more in favor of, I hate to say making it tighter because I'm trying to make it tighter, but you see what I'm saying? Of taking that allowance out. Yes. And if we take it out, then that gives us the ability to work within the spirit versus allowing the person to force their hand.
Just throwing this out there, some communities do do architectural review as a separate review of other commercial projects. Typically, what you see most commonly would be like a downtown setting where you want, you really want your building to match or have some continuity. We obviously don't have that, so it wouldn't be into that level of extent. However, let's say you have a building over, you know, 10,000 square feet, you can say that that has to be approved through the board of adjustment or planning board or county council or something like that. I don't know if we're ready for that at this point, but that is an option if you really want to get, you know, in the middle of the area of it. Or what I think is the more, the better approach at this point is to clearly define what is allowed and keep the option for a variance in there. So that when these folks do do this, which they will do, there's a, there's a linear process for them to make that case. So if I may, I will suggest, it sounds like there's some consistency around Randy's comments. Is that, is that there? Okay. So I'll go back to the drawing board. I'll talk to Alan more about this. And we should really get this, fine to, and then back to what you next needed. The public hearing would be moved to equal then, but again, that's.
Are there any other questions on that? So moving, can we actually switch these E and D? Because I think we need to take your E first before we get to D.
Hope we made it E. We didn't make it D. Okay.
That worked?
Yeah.
So the reappointments. I'm assuming, favor of appointing Bert Lankis to his term?
I second that if that is a motion.
Others in favor of Bert Lankis?
Aye.
Me and. I do not wish to reappoint Mr. Hayes to board adjustment.
Second?
Others in favor? Opposed?
I have somebody who may be able to make a difference for them. I haven't spoken to him yet, but I will, so.
So that takes care of the reappointments, which now gives us an additional vacancy on the board of adjustment. Those D, that is the item committee vacancies, parks, and rec, and the board of adjustment, second alternate, which would now be still a vacancy on second alternate if we place someone as the first alternate.
Usually, well, of course, it's up to the board to do whatever they want, but normally when there's a vacancy on the board, you move your first alternate up.
Right, okay.
So then you would, you would fill your first alternate seat before the second alternate. And that may be what you said, but I couldn't hear you.
So the appointment we make tonight will be to the first alternate, and we again have vacancy as our alternate.
Correct.
Yes. But you do also need to take action to move your first alternate to your board.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to move our onboard adjustment, to move our first alternate onto the board. Is this second?
My turn.
Brian. Others in favor?
Aye.
Then opposed? So now we have the vacancy to fill and we do have someone interested.
I have a fish on the line.
Let's hurry.
We really meant, actually, Eugene, which is well, and I think the terrific additions to board adjustment. So I'll make a motion to remove Eugene Edwards to first alternate.
Yes.
Yes, first alternate, board adjustment.
My turn.
Others in favor? So now we're still under adjustment, first, second alternate of the board adjustments.
I have had a few people tell me they were going to bring me applications. I've not seen them yet. But if I could just, who was the second, who seconded that last motion?
Randy.
Thank you.
So now with parks and recreation vacancy, there's more interest there, obviously.
Yeah. If I can ask just a moment. If, one thing I'm nervous, you know, as we've moved through the last four years of my term on council. If we look at the finance committee, which is on this sheet here, we'll see that there are a number of votes from District One, but we also have discussed amongst ourselves whether that board is even necessary. I mean, the work that they do, I think is important. It's more of an oversight committee. They look at our budget. They, they review the accountants' work every October, I think, and look at the audit. So I think that is important in that. I'm not, I'm not saying that I think we should remove that committee at all. But if we look at the other committees, so there are four other boards, there are a total of 29 appointments. If you exclude financing, with all the other boards, there are 29 appointments. And District One has five, five of those appointments. You would expect with 29 appointments that District One would have 10, right? Instead, we only have five. So I'm gonna, I just want to make that point. So going forward, I think that District One needs having a little more consideration as we get those appointments. Now that I have six, I want to zag and I'm going to totally undo what I just said because the person that I feel is, is most qualified would be an immediate and impactful addition to the, to the Parks and Recreation Board, Tristan Cowley. So I just want to throw that out there for discussion. I think with his experience with biking and hiking and greenways and that sort of thing, that as we move into that part of our parks plan, I think he would be a really good addition. So I want to just throw that out there. I know we have an applicant for District One for Parks and Recreation Board. In fact, it's my neighbor who lives directly across the street. So in a way, I'm going to feel a little unhelpful when I meet him at the mailbox tomorrow because I'm not recommending him at this time. Tim's a very good guy and I can see him being a great addition to that, to that wood, but for the moment, I like Tristan Cowley. I just want to throw that out there.
I was looking at his, at the districts that the Parks and Recreation there, and since we have five people that are interested in this position, this one vacancy, why don't we expand the Parks Committee and add one, I like Tristan's, I think, I think you hit it right on the head, Brian. But why, since we've got all these people wanting to serve on this committee, why don't we expand this committee and add a couple more of these people on?
So you might possibly be able to escape this meeting without offending anyone across the street.
So why are the committees set with a number? They are, Roger, history.
Your what?
Why are the committees set with a number? You elected to give us your history lessons.
The history.
The, really, there is no history. Is that the, correct, if I'm wrong, Sue, but the number has kind of floated back and forth on the committees except for the board of adjustment?
And that's, that's true. It's, as, as a new board is created, council more or less picks the number. This board has been, I believe it's a six. Just because it is, it may have been because that's how many people we had interested in. But, but the only, only caution I would give you is that if you start making the boards too big, there's not enough room in here. But your planning board is still larger than this board, so you're good.
Doesn't matter already. Would it help to have another room?
I'm just going to ask that question.
I mean, it's an advisory. They're not setting policies, but are there ever ties?
So can we deal with Randy's first? Randy, make it a motion to chairman.
We're still, still processing whether she can argue or not.
I think if, if it's a board that's making a lot of decisions, an odd number is advisable just so that you don't end up with a lot of ties. This board has been around for over 10 years with six people and I don't go to all the meetings. Nicole's been to several.
Should we hear from Nicole?
Several, last few years. She can tell you if it's a problem.
A tie says it hasn't been a problem since I've been here. It's, it's mostly been consensus. So.
Would you appreciate an extra member? Are you good with what you have?
I would. It, it does with six members. It always makes it a little hard if, to get a quorum sometimes if, you know, because if we're missing two members, then we're, we get in trouble. So I do, do believe extra, an extra member would be helpful.
Daniel, your turn.
This is really the board's decision. I mean, all these points are valid. It makes sense to me. It is a very popular committee. We're lucky to have that. So however you, however you all want to handle it, we'll, we'll certainly carry it forward.
So please, why don't we add two?
You fill a vacancy and then add one. That makes it a seven member board.
If you want to do two, you can make it even.
You're making an eight member board?
So if you want to just add one, then maybe the, oh, no, I don't know where you're at.
You don't want to get two that you can, you know, planning board's not people. It's a big, it's all people.
I'll make a motion to, to expand the Parks Committee by one member and to one member. I'll say that.
Others in favor of adding C to the planning, Parks and Recreation Board? Brian?
Aye.
Any of those? So then Brian, did you want to make the motion for Mr.?
Okay, I'll make a motion to move Tristan Cowley to onboard disabled positions on the planning.
Others in favor of Tristan Cowley to Parks and Recreation Board?
And just for clarity, that's a two-year term starting tomorrow?
Whatever you say.
Whatever I say. Okay.
Tristan, Sue, isn't Tristan Cowley, didn't someone resign?
He's still in the.
He's still on the bench and that was silver.
It's funny when he resigned.
You're going with newly created position.
E, e, either one's going to have the same, before I speak.
The vacant seat expires June 30th, 2022.
Okay, you're right. I, I need to know if it's a, is this the newly created seat or the existing term? The vacancy ends June 30th, 2022.
I think let's address, let's appoint him to the vacancy.
So now we have an opening on the newsstand.
So again, I would love to advocate for someone from District One just because I think these boards are short. People from District One. I know Tim Dunn. I live directly across the street from him. He's dependable. He's likable. I think he would be a good addition unless somebody else has a very strong feeling. I would love to nominate Tim Dunn to the Parks and Recreation Board.
The only other person I know is District Three, so.
I'll say it.
Brian and Ryan, Sue. Others in favor of Tim Dunn for the newly created position? Any of those? Okay, so that's the agenda. Do the staff update?
Sorry, I'm still making notes. Trying to figure out two years from tomorrow. It's not that hard. I actually have nothing further. Pretty sure. You having trouble hearing me? Chris, I was calling on you for a staff report.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's hard to hear. So your, your tax report is as of January 31st, and it's, it's a little out of date. So I just want to give a quick update that we've actually reached our 97% budgeted collection rate. We've collected two, a little over $2.5 million, have less than $75,000 to collect, and we will continue to attempt to bring those delinquent people into the town hall to pay us. and we will continue to, um, attempt to bring those delinquent people into the town hall to pay us. And that's really all I've got, unless you've got some questions.
Thank you, Arlie.
You're welcome. Yeah, I just wanna remind everyone about our drop-in next Friday, March fifth, from ten to two at Mills River Town Hall, for people to come look at the, um, park master plans and give us your feedback.
All right, strap in, you're listening. Get it? Well, I, I. I do, I do wanna talk on a couple of important things. One of them, you've probably heard that the state is looking at the potential of lighting and poll directions because of redistricting concerns, the census has announced that they're not gonna release data until September. In a normal census year, they release that there in February, through mid-March, so it gives time for people to take care of redistricting, uh, public input, all that stuff, prior to the, prior to the, uh, Arlie period for the, I mean, fall election. In feathered light, um, the state board elections has recommended all elections be put back this year. Now, with regards to redistricting, first of all, that's not set in stone, it's regulation by the board of elections. It's a state council summary board decision, no, no information on that yet. With regards to districting and municipal elections, right now, there are, there is proposal to push all municipal elections back here. There is a pushback from the Leves, mother folks in the House, that we should, I believe that should be left up to the municipality to decide. So if you wanna reach out here and let their representatives and senior board one, I think, I might be able to time to do that. In terms of redistricting for the town, this is not applied to us, it applies for other communities, because we have what are called residency districts, we don't have true electoral districts, meaning the only requirement to run in the district is that you live there, but anyone can vote for anyone. So while it is wise for us to take a look at those district boundaries every ten years, we aren't required to use them by law, I was strongly encouraged to wait until all the other districts are settled before we look at anything that is council districts, I think it will be confusing for the public to try to look at all of them at the same time. So again, I do think it's wise, like Charter says, that the district should be protected periodically, and that is an open-ended term, you know, but I, but I do believe that it's worth waiting till the other districts are settled and on the back, you all. Maybe next year, what, maybe the year after, depending on the problem that's settled, but anyway, just wanna give you a quick update. Those of you who have production control, they will find yourself, not as good a challenge. But we'll wait and see how that goes. I just wanted to send out a big thank you to the staff, Mike Dale, Eddie Swinney, everybody, if all, Alan knows about the staff. It's been a very busy, uh, winter, I'm getting there to get a picture, and a very busy spring. Everybody continues to step up and do what needs to be done regardless of their own responsibilities, so I think you should feel very lucky to have a book that you have, I know I certainly am lucky to have that. We will be posting for the running position soon, that will provide a little bit of the force. But it'll be a little bit yet before we get somebody on board, so just wanted to acknowledge everyone's hard work for the president of the town, because there's a lot, a lot goes on in these walls that people never hear about, but you see, I see that every day. And I also wanted to send out a big congratulations to Abby, uh, who was working on becoming, uh, a municipal certified clerk, she had a first and fourth classes, uh, last week, and she passed her exam at a hundred percent. So we're very excited about that. She did four of me in the questions, which were very difficult, so, um, I think I need a whole new respect for clerks, just probably the most, just questions. There are a number of other updates I could get into, but I was waiting a long for you, if those go, you can do it for us.
Council comments?
Yeah, I just wanna give a couple of, uh, work project updates. And there's some, uh, longer has used by a list of traffic projects that they've heard about. One of them is she writing for the general class about market road, so if I start talking about solar winds or collecting samples, uh, I think we're a little bit much. So as I mentioned earlier, NC one nine ones and right way out, that project has been pushed back one year, so twenty twenty-four. Um, NC two eighty, uh, the management project, I mean, that has been pushed back five years to twenty thirty-one. On March fifteenth, Butler Bridge Road will be closed. And there will be a listen bridge that goes across, that twenty-sixth bridge, that's across Butler Bridge, and closing lanes and traffic in one direction for a period of six months, alternating which ones are closing. So, uh, moral of the story is they, I think, away from the high twenty-six. Absolutely, yes, that's gonna be a mess out there, driving in one direction today. Or now, the amount of traffic that's going to come through here, I do not envy those folks. So that's all, thank you.
What else, Colin? Pushing to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn, I might want words.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.